Good evening, Sean.
I have six o'clock on my lower right corner of my computer screen. So I'd like to call the May 11th, 2020 Dexter City Council Meeting to order. If everybody could join me by looking at the flag and saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd appreciate it, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you, Justin, for putting the flag up there.
Welcome.
Ms. Jones, if you could call the roll, please.
Okay, thank you. I can do that this time. Councilmember Bell.
Present.
Councilmember Cousins.
Present.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Knight.
There.
Councilmember Michelle.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Mayor Keo.
Present.
Thank you. And welcome, everyone. For those of you that are new to our Zoom City Council Meetings, we welcome you to this forum. We've been doing this since March 27th. And wanted to just remind everyone that typically the way the host, which is Justin, has this set up is so that all the council members, myself, and key staff are unmuted. Everybody else in the audience is currently muted until we get to the opportunities on the agenda for public comment. There is a raise your hand feature. If you open your participant view at the bottom of the screen, on the right-hand side, it pops up on mine anyway. At the bottom of that participant feature, there's a raise hand feature. We ask that you click that button when we get to non-arranged so that you can speak. And as a reminder, I look at that for council members. I can't see you all in the view that I have with the agenda up here. So if you could, please use the raise hand when you want to make a motion or second. I'll do the best I can to call on you. And Justin, when we get into the non-arranged, if I miss anybody, please help me monitor who's got their hand up. So those are just a few of the ground rules. With that, I'd like to move into Item C, which is approval of the meeting minutes. We have two sets of minutes. One from our regular City Council meeting on April 27th, and the other from our City Council Work Session, which was our first budget review on April 29th. I see Jim Smith has his hand up. Jim?
I'll make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Motion by Smith.
Second by Knight.
Second by Knight. Thank you, Julie.
All right, I can't find the raise hand thing.
No, we'll go with that for now. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Smith, any comments on either sides of minutes?
I have none.
Ms. Knight, do you have any?
No, I have none.
Other council members, do you see any comments on the minutes? Okay. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. We will move on to, well, we have no pre-arranged participation. So we'll move on to Item E, approval of the agenda. Looks like Scott Bell has his hand up.
Oh, I was just muted. I was trying to get unmuted. Thanks.
Gotcha. Okay.
I'm unmuted now.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay, so I'm seeking a motion for approval of the agenda under Item E. Jim?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Donna Fisher. Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Fantastic. Thank you. We have no public hearings this evening, so we're down to non-arranged participation. So this is the first spot on the agenda for anyone who is participating from the public to speak. We ask that you would raise your hand on the chat window, if you would, please, to let us know that you have something to say. And if you get called, once you get called on, if you would state your name, an address for the record, and then you have five minutes. So I see we have a hand up. I think I saw Tracy Lambert's hand.
Yep, that's me.
Tracy, welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
My address is 6812 Strawberry Lake Road, Dexter. And I'm Tracy Lambert, and I have a frog in my throat all of a sudden. Um, I actually just wanted to come on really quickly to just talk a little bit about Dexter Days and kind of share with you guys where we're thinking or what we're thinking as it relates to the festival this year. We submitted our permit, and I know it's missing a couple of signatures from the fire chief and the police chief. But before, you know, we get, you guys put it on the agenda, I guess it needs those pieces. And I'm just curious if it will be able to come up for a vote prior to your next meeting. Simply because if, you know, everything changes and we're able to put on the festival this year, knowing now that we have the city's support for that would be much more helpful than waiting for like the middle of June or even July. We do this because our vendors, we do this for our vendors, our food booths and our entertainment. We market a lot for them, and we know that it's a possibility that we might not be able to put on this festival this year. But we don't know that now, and so we were hoping that this would be on the agenda so that it could get approved pending everything was safe and all we can move forward. So I'm not really sure kind of where we're going to go from here, when we could expect to see it getting on the agenda, and maybe an idea on whether or not we think you guys are going to be able to approve it pending everything's good to go in August. I guess that's kind of pretty much it for us.
Okay, Tracy, we don't usually respond at this point in time, but I know that I'd like to talk about that when we get to our City Manager Report. So thank you for sharing your comments.
Okay, yep.
Are there other members of the public that would like to speak this evening? Justin, am I missing a hand anywhere?
I don't see a hand. Do you want me to unmute everybody and give them an opportunity?
Yeah, why don't you do that, just to make sure we don't miss anybody, please? Thank you.
All right, so I've offered an unmute to those who were muted.
Okay, is there, did we miss anyone under non-arranged? Okay. Thank you. I'll assume we got everybody. Tracy, thanks for your comments. Just sit back. We'll get through reports here shortly. You can re-mute everybody you need to there. Justin, Item H is communications. The one communication in the packet is their upcoming meeting list. Are there any questions or comments on the meeting list?
John Paul.
Okay.
There's, we're going to have a special chamber of commerce, I mean, okay, a meeting with the chamber, yes, excuse me, I lost my mind for a second there, on the 18th, which is next Monday, okay? And it'll be at, I think at 10 o'clock, it'll be on line. And I will make sure that that is supplied to the city so they know that people that want to get in. I don't, we don't have that number right now. We haven't been informed of the time of the meeting. It's either nine or 10. The meeting is 10 most of the time, but that varies. So I just wanted to let you know there is one other meeting scheduled, which is not a regular meeting. And it's the deal with trying to work with figuring out how we can help many of our businesses here in town. And maybe the governor would have another answer before now, but it doesn't seem that way. So we're just being patient and trying to support our business as we can through a variety of different ways. And I see some people have suggested, and I think that's some of our good ideas when we can take that up.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Other comments on the upcoming meeting list? I don't see any hands. I'm not hearing anyone. Okay, we'll move into our first report, which is from our Public Services Superintendent. Dan, how are you this evening?
Good. How's everybody today?
Okay.
Well, I provided a two-week written report in your council packet. I'd like to start with a couple of updates on where we are with projects. We had a meeting the other day. Grand Street's supposed to start next week. I called Chris from OHM on Forest Street, and he got ahold of the contractor. And they're gonna, at the latest, be two weeks before they can get back, at the latest date. So I will keep everybody updated if they can get here sooner than that. Central Street Project, Fonson came in today and picked up all the mulch blanket on Central Street that was laying in everybody's front yard. They are supposed to be here the 19th of May, which is next Tuesday, to start on restoration. Today, Mill Creek Park, this morning, they were working down behind City Office at Broad and Grand, and they also were working down off of Baker Road, dropping off materials. That's all updates I have. Do you have any questions on my report?
Not seeing anybody with their hand up. Am I missing anybody? Dan, how are the staff doing? Everybody okay? Everybody holding their own?
Yeah, everybody's doing well, happy and healthy. We're running into a few issues with a little bit more work than, with the water and wastewater than they can really handle. We're trying to work that out by bringing people in for a little while to try to, you know, keep up with the mistakes this morning. I had 11 of them. Construction's starting. This is a time of season when the workload starts to pick up. But everybody's, all of our staff is doing a really good job. They're working hard. They're starting early, staying late. So hopefully in the next week or two, we can hopefully get back to everybody, back to work.
Gotcha. I appreciate the effort to put up all the extra signs in the playgrounds. I like the format that we borrowed from our neighbors in Celine there. They look really nice.
All right, thank you. We're trying to keep them up. We've had a few problems with the stakes being pulled out and them thrown around a little bit, but we're trying to keep up every day to make sure they're posted for everybody.
Gotcha. Well, thanks for the report. It looks like you don't have many questions this evening, so.
Thank you, Council.
Next up is our Community Development Manager Report. Michelle, how are you?
Fine. How are you, Sean?
Good, thank you.
Excellent. How's the rest of council doing?
Great.
Excellent, excellent. So before I go into updates, do you have any questions for me? Okay, so I'm going to start with Encore. There's been a lot of back and forth since the Planning Commission, excuse me, postponed action on the Encore's application last week. As I'm sure you've probably heard, it was a, it was a pretty robust meeting discussion or discussion at the meeting. The, the lack of a complete application really hurt the applicant, and Planning Commission really called them out on it. But I think there was some, what's the word? Some assumptions made that Planning Commission doesn't want this project or that the city doesn't support this project. And so I've had multiple conversations with Dan Cooney. I've had conversations with Courtney and Paul, and I think, Sean, you've had conversations following up with Courtney. The city has always and still believes that this project is at a conceptual, from a conceptual point of view, has merit. But there is an expectation, and I explained this to Dan, that ordinances will be followed and that the format in which information needs to be provided will be, you know, that will happen. Dan completely understands now what it is he needs. Excuse me, we've gotten beyond the language barrier. He's been very receptive to, to the assistance we're trying to provide. And remember, this is a very delicate balancing act that the city has to engage in because of the type of application. We can't be seen be negotiating, and, and we're not. And so that, that, getting beyond that communication issue is, is challenging, but I think we're there. I did receive, excuse me, a call from Nederfeld that is the engineer that's been hired by Encore to provide their plan. I've been in touch with OHM. They are able to provide CAD drawings of Ann Arbor Street so that the Encore's engineer will be able to utilize that information instead of having to go out and do all of the surveying work that might normally happen with an application. So that'll be tremendous savings to the Encore. And all that information will allow the engineer to provide the information that Encore needs. So I have, I have a lot of confidence at this point that the meeting in June for the Planning Commission will have a, will have all of the information that is needed in the format that's required and that the Planning Commission is going to feel much more comfortable about taking the action. Excuse me, did you have any questions for me regarding Encore before I go forward?
I have a question, please, Sean.
Go ahead, Julie. Thank you.
Was there a number of people from the public at that meeting, Michelle?
I don't recall the number, but there were people that participated from the public.
And what kind of feedback are they giving? Is it negative or?
I, so there were two pieces of correspondence, if I remember correctly. It, I'm sorry, not two pieces. There was an email that I received from a local, one of the residents on Fourth Street that I provided to the Planning Commission. Comments that were raised during the public hearing and the additional one that was brought in last Monday from the Fourth Street resident. The biggest concerns are the parking. So, excuse me. Like I said, the conversations that I've had with Dan, as well as with his engineer today, I think they're going to be able to address what their parking needs are and to us, to the comfort and satisfaction of the Planning Commission and hopefully ultimately City Council. Their engineer also said that they have reached out and are having dialogue with St. Andrews about a shared use agreement for the parking lot there. So while that's not been finalized, the fact that they have reached out and they will put in writing that they are committed to working on that, it will go a long way for them, I think.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so there's a, you'll also notice in my report there are a couple of suggestions, if you will, regarding business assistance. One came from a local resident, and her suggestion was to maybe repurpose parking spaces, on-street parking spaces on Main Street North Side between Alpine and Broad to allow the three food service businesses, River View, Dexter's Pub, and Dexter Creamery, more space than is currently provided on the sidewalk so that they could do outdoor seating. And that thought was in anticipation of, at least the initial opening or business openings that may start to happen after the 29th of May. It's an interesting concept. I certainly would want input from the rest of the businesses, like Witzen and the Barber Shop, Ruby's Makery, on their thought about not having parking right in front of their storefronts. But there are a number of different communities pre-COVID that have utilized on-street parking spaces or outdoor seating. And I really would like to know just at, you know, at this point, do you see that as being something that the city could or would be interested in at least looking at?
Yes.
Any other comments?
Former restaurateur, I know that's very, going to be very difficult, even at one-fourth, one-third, one-half of businesses. So I realize it does affect other businesses along the way, you mentioned us, Witzen, et cetera. But the restaurants are going to have a tough time, no matter what happens, coming back. And we may lose some of them. I feel bad about that. So anything that we can do to help them out? If they could do with some spacing there, an outside city could be helpful. And yet I don't know if any of them would want to do that because other than the pub there, have, I don't think anything that they purchased already to do that. So that purchase also above the odds they have right now.
Good comments, Paul. Thank you. Okay, if there's no other comments, then I'll move on to the second example. And this is one that I'll go, it's something more in the DDA's realm. It could be something that both city and the DDA consider because we do have other businesses outside the DDA that could benefit. It's an example, excuse me, that comes from downtown Midland, and they created a gift card stimulus program. And basically, for every $25 gift card that's purchased, the DDA would provide an additional $10 gift certificate to that same business at no expense to the purchaser. That way, that, that person is not only is, it's an encouragement to get somebody to purchase a gift certificate on that business. And then, excuse me, the DDA sends a check to the business for the gift certificate that was purchased. So say $125 gift certificates are purchased for Joe and Rosie's, just as an example. The DDA would provide a check for $3,500. Obviously, there needs to be, there would need to be a budget established for that. You'd want to make sure that that was something that not only the DDA Act would allow, but that the DDA Plan would also allow. Now, obviously, none of the DDA Plans anywhere in the state of Michigan have a line that says, "In the case of a COVID pandemic, you can use your funds for this." So you look at things like what are the goals and programs or expenditures that are listed in the DDA Plan and in their TIF Plan, or things like marketing and business assistance. And I'm confident that those do exist for our DDA, but it is something for them to talk about before, you know, jumping headlong and deciding to do that. It will require a significant amount of additional administrative work to make the program happen. So I hope you all have had the chance to look at the information that was in your packet and let me know if you've got any feedback that you can give me on it.
So do we buy the gift certificate through the business or through the DDA? If as a person that I want to buy this certificate?
So the gift certificate gets purchased, if I remember right, in the, in the information that was provided as an accessory to my report, you're working with a local bank and the gift certificate, the gift certificate comes through that local bank. Excuse me, I don't have that ancillary piece. Hang on, just, is it here? Here we go. Excuse me. So, excuse me. The revenue comes in for the gift card to the, to the city, if I remember correctly. The city deposits that money with the bank. So it's not like they're going to the local business and buying that business's gift card. This is going to be a generic gift card, if I, if I understood this correctly.
I think it's still to a specific business. It's just
Yes.
through the city.
Correct.
And then the gift card's more specific. There must be a way to make it specific.
Yes.
Well, I want to get a $25 gift card and give it to my sister for her birthday to go to the pub. So I can say I want to buy a $25 gift card.
Yeah, it's a, it's an online system that would link to the city because then the city would cut the check to the pub, for example, for the $35.
Then how does I know my sister, how's my sister going to know I got her a gift card?
The system provides an immediate e-gift card.
I see. Okay.
Yeah, so she would get an email with a gift card.
Okay, thank you. I'm much clearer.
Yeah.
So there are a lot of, there's a lot of stuff to unpack with it, but I really wanted to know what council thought of it. You know, you're going to think of things that I'm not, and I don't want to waste a lot of time on this if, if there's not any support for it.
Paul here, I think that more accurately, the support should be, first of all, talked about with the DDA to figure if they want to work on the project. I don't know. Initially, it seems something may be beneficial, but I don't know that. And does the DDA have money? You know, I realize we're not a, they have some of these other cities, so they may not have 35 or 25 or 35, I don't know. Can we have that promise from Sean that that could be on the agenda at the next DDA meeting, which I think is the fourth?
Yep, Paul, I, Paul, I think that it's Michelle's intent to put it on that, put it in front of the DDA. But I don't know, it sounds, I'm not sure that this is necessarily something that I'm in favor of. I don't know that I understand the logistics of the money flow yet. So I don't know, but I mean, I think it'll be talked about at the DDA.
You have talked about it?
No, we have not.
Have not, not yet. It just came up last week.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Right, it doesn't, I haven't provided you with a lot of details with it. I don't know all the details with it. It's, it's an idea, one of the better ideas, in my opinion, that have just come down the pipe. And I thought it was worth at least finding out at first blush what you all thought of it. And likewise with the DDA. And if it's something you want more research done on to provide all of the details and how the mechanics of it would work, I can come back with that. But like I said, if there's, if this isn't the type of business assistance route you wanted to go into, even as an investigative, I needed to know that upfront.
Yeah, Michelle, one of my concerns is that the DDA, by virtue of that by virtue of that boundary, is like reaching out to a subset of the population of businesses.
You mean a subset of the businesses within the entire city, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, I get that.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about the precedent of trying to come up with this, a support network for only a fraction, so to speak, if it's through the DDA. And I don't, I don't know that that's, I don't know how much of an impact, you know, let's say $10,000 is going to have, you know, using the Midland example of $25,000 spent on 1,000 gift cards and an extra $10,000 gets divided amongst X number of businesses. I don't know if that's...
Those are valid, valid questions.
For the mechanics of setting it up and doing it all and the extra accounting and when we have a lot of other things to be mindful of. But that's just my own feeling. Like I said, the DDA is, I think, going to talk about it next Thursday.
Hold on, I'm just writing some notes down, please.
Yep.
While we're waiting, Sean, I can't hear Paul Cousins. His mic goes in and out. Am I the only one that has trouble?
No, I was having a little bit of trouble hearing him, but I could make it out.
Maybe I need to get closer. Maybe I need to get closer to my phone here. Is that better?
Yeah, that's a lot better.
All right, well, I'll be right smack dab in your face then.
All right, I'm going to turn the volume down now on everybody else.
Okay, my last...
I thought it was my computer.
Thanks for saying something, Donna.
Okay, my last update for you is the request that staff received from Jolly Pumpkin. You know that they have asked or have had interest in the past. They're still looking for it, trying to figure out how to make it work. An outdoor eating area, excuse me. So, you know, when you look at the timeline or history of the, of the brewery, yeah, the manufacturing facility and then as an accessory use, you have a tasting room. And as an accessory to the tasting room, you have a kitchen, which is their dining area. And now they'd like to expand that for an outdoor area again as an accessory to the tasting room. Ultimately, they'd like to come in and they would need to do a text amendment for a permanent solution. In, in the meantime, coming out of this COVID thing, they would like to know if there's a way to do a temporary use for a period of time to help them weather this storm until the, until such time that they come in for the permanent text amendment and ultimately approval for it. So your ordinance does allow the zoning administrator to grant temporary uses for a period of up to 12, up to 12 months in any zoning district. And I've provided the information for you in your packet. I think they would like something like a year as a temporary. I'm not sure I'm comfortable as zoning administrator issuing a temporary use for an entire year. I think I might be more comfortable with a three- to six-month temporary use in this case and then look at it to see if an extension is something you wanted to go with. In the, at the same time, I would encourage the Jolly Pumpkin to initiate the text amendment. And now I know that they would probably do that. They're also going to ask for the fees to be waived. I think that's going to have to be a larger call than just me saying, "Well, maybe," but I really would like your feedback on, on all of this. This is all, it's quite a lot, but give me whatever feedback you have.
How long, Michelle, how long is the process of the permanent text?
You'd start with the text amendment, which could be basically one meeting, very similar to when we added the tasting room as a special land use to manufacturing in the RD zoning district. So the text amendment would be to that particular section of the RD district to add outdoor seating with whatever development standards you wanted to have with that. That'd be a public hearing with the planning commission. If they were comfortable with it, they could make the recommendation to council and then council would consider it at their meeting or their second meeting of the month. After that, it's the publication, if it goes through. So you're looking at 45 to 60 days.
But if they make it a special land use, then you'd have to go through that.
Right, if it's a special, well, and that would be the recommendation to make it a special land use for the permanent, for a permanent application.
Temporary approvals administrative, right?
Temporary is administrative, yes. But all of the things that would come into play, permanent, I would be, I would be requiring at the temporary. So...
Paul, I cut you off. I apologize.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I just, once again, I think as a restaurateur and as all the rest of them are struggling and it says there may be the survival, I think it should be done on a trial basis here if it works. You know, the great questions have been asked here, whether sort of going to have a tent, how many days. They are not open, I know, on certain days as well. So that tent would not make a lot of sense, in my opinion, if you're going to have it there all the time. Tents are expensive. If they just want outdoor seating for a period of time there, that could, could help them with the six feet away from people. But to me, the temporary process is there and I, I think I'd have to have a lot more detail as Michelle explained about wanting a permanent process there. But if we do anything temporarily, remember it's going to be June. We're halfway in May, we got June, July, and August. They may get a few days in September, but it's not going to be a long time anyway. It's going to be there, maybe four months at most.
So for, to give a little bit more details for you, there would be a tent, there would also be, there would be a tent and it would be the grassy area, they're proposing the grassy area to the left of their parking lot, directly in front of the building, where you walk into the tasting room now. So if you're looking at their front door, it's to your left. It would, the entire area would be fenced off with a fairly decorative removable fence system. You have chains and posts in the downtown. I think they're proposing something a little more, a little more in keeping with their, with what they do. So it's like, it's a temporary wooden fence around the entire area so that people aren't wandering off premises with alcoholic beverages. You would have three or four picnic tables outside the tent as well as a few picnic tables inside the tent. And there would be an area for horseshoe pitching. No music. Trash receptacles would be outside. People would go inside to take, make their order and bring their food outside to consume, or food and beverage outside to consume. There would not be table service. So just like currently, they don't have table service. You order your food at the bar, you take it back to your... That's how it would be in the outside. Their hours would be, excuse me, similar, it would be what they have now for their tasting room. I believe they're closed on Mondays, Paul.
I believe so.
It's like 3:00 in the afternoon to 10:00 in the evening. I'd have to double check, but it's, it's, it would mirror what their current tasting room. Our...
Michelle?
Yes, sir.
This is, this is, let's say that in, let's just say in August, they're back up to 50% capacity or whatever the governor's orders may allow.
Right.
Is there, is there a point on that limit where they don't need the outdoor?
From a temporary, probably. But what's going, what they're, what they're going to do at the same time is ask for the permanent, go through the process for the permanent and get either approval or no approval for that.
Okay, but at their cost or?
To go through the text amendment, I've always, I've always submitted to them that it would be at their cost. They're asking for it to be waived.
For the, for the permanent?
For the permanent, yes. To go, they're asking for the cost to amend the ordinance to allow the permanent. They're asking for those costs to be waived. And would the city initiate that instead of them having to initiate it?
Yeah, I don't like that precedent. Personally.
I'm, I'm not hearing a lot from others. So what I'm going to assume is when I hear only one person speak, that there's consensus for that. So I, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, you're the only one that, that made a comment about a temporary, on a trial basis. Sean, you addressed the permanent with the fees and not waiving it. And I see that there are, Scott Bell and Jim Smith are waiving to me.
Okay, I see Scott's hand up. I'll call Scott first.
Thanks, Sean. Just wanted to say I would support the temporary. Sounds reasonable and the permanent's an entirely different question now. And I agree with Sean. I don't, I think it's a bad precedent to waive, waive fees like that.
Okay.
Jim, I see your hands up. Jim Smith, please.
Yes, I am not in favor of either temporary or permanent there.
Okay, Donna?
I concur with Scott, except I have one question. The entertainment piece of it is more than just helping them get on with their business. So I'm, I don't know if I want to set that precedence.
Which?
Horseshoe pitching and their...
Oh, the horseshoe pitching.
And you said music?
In the, in the permanent setting, which that would all still have to go through site plan and special use review. So you got, okay, go ahead.
When you started to speak, I thought we were approaching this from, "They're struggling and what can we do to help them along?" And now it's pretty much shifted over to kind of an idea that they've had for some time and let's just do it now. So, you know, I have a little, little bit mixed on this.
Okay, I'm sorry for the confusion. They've always wanted outdoor seating. And they've known for a while the process it would take. They've even gone through a pre-application meeting on an outdoor seating area. They did that last year. So they would like to go forward with that, but in the interim, because there's going to be some time before that all gets done, it's not just the text amendment. It would then have to go through a special land use process. While that's going through, they wanted to know if they could do, if the city would support the temporary outdoor arrangement. Does, does that help clarify some things, Donna? Okay.
Thanks.
Sorry for not being so clear in the beginning.
Well, I don't know that's anything you did. It could be me being boggie, but I just didn't get it. So we're good.
Julie, Julie or Zach? Did I miss a hand?
Yes, I would like to speak, please.
Okay, Julie, go ahead. You're recognized, please. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you. Yes, I am definitely in favor of the temporary. Particularly if businesses are struggling through this COVID-19 issue. I am definitely in favor of the temporary. I agree with Scott and Sean. The permanent one is going to take a little more time and a little more detail, but I am in favor of temporary at this time.
Well, I appreciate all of your feedback. I will let them know. It, it sounds like there is consensus for, for a temporary and that if it, if they could, they should move forward with a permanent, but that process, in other words, the text amendment followed by special land use, if the text amendment should go through. So I will follow up with them and I appreciate you all providing me with feedback on that. That's it for my updates. And I know I've taken up a lot of your time for your meeting, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any comments on any of the boards or other commissions as we go down through or can I jump all the way down to city manager report? Seeing none, I'll turn the floor over to our city manager, Courtney.
I guess I can start with the Dexter Day's permit. Just get that one taken care of for what, the information I've collected so far, anyway. I did receive it. I did send it off to the sheriff and the fire department. I also sent it to the health department just to get their feedback. Fire department did sign off on it. I did send it to Commander Flores because our lieutenant and our sergeant are both not working right now. And we just got a new lieutenant, actually, that started today. So I sent it to Commander Flores. He's obviously participated in Dexter Day's many years. You know, we all know Keith. And he is uncomfortable signing off on it, as he said, due to the unforeseen circumstances. You know, it's hard for him to sign off on something without, because it's impossible to have the social distancing and the uncertainty of when we will move into Phase 6. Because I had sent council the governor's phased reopening plan and large gatherings like this wouldn't be allowed until Phase 6, which isn't supposed to take effect until there are either a vaccine or a treatment. Just from the read of the phase-in plan, I would assume we're going to stay in Phase 5 for the foreseeable future because that's where things are basically reopened, but there's still no large gatherings. The health department kind of said the same thing, that it's really difficult to predict what's going to be happening. And, you know, she pointed out the number of things that have been canceled, like Ann Arbor's art fair, which just happened on Friday, I think, or Thursday, Top of the Park, Chelsea Sites and Sounds, various things. So the soonest it could be on the agenda is May 26th. But, I mean, I guess I can put it on without the sheriff's signature and council can decide what they want to do with it. And I can provide you with the different emails and feedback that I've received for you guys to consider.
Courtney, I'll, I'll jump in here. You know, I have to tell you, I'm not really comfortable with this. You know, I think, first of all, we're only at Stage 3 flattening and we don't even know when we're going to be at Stage 4, let alone 5 or 6. I also don't like the unpredictability of how many people something like this could draw. I, I, you know, I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but in, in, out of concern over, you know, spending dollars towards something that isn't a guarantee. I'm not, I'm, Tracy, I'd say Tracy... I'm not in favor of, of supporting this when it comes around, especially if the sheriff isn't comfortable with it. I don't know how other council members feel, but I'm not there. And I'm not trying to say no to Dexter Days. I like Dexter Days as much as I, as anybody, but in, in, I think this year that it's the wrong move to do something like that or to, to go forward with, even give the opinion, impression that we want that. Michelle, well, let me call it council first, Scott.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo your, your opinion, Sean. I think I, I seriously doubt we're going to be in phase six in three months in August and so it may be a moot point anyway, but I, I don't think that, that we should be encouraging this right now.
Thanks, Scott. Jim, Smith?
I agree with both you and Scott on that.
Michelle?
I was wondering.
I see Michelle has her hand up.
Yep, thanks, Sean. I was wondering if, if the, if Tracy and the committee had considered maybe rescheduling it into the fall when there may be more concrete details or information on holding larger gatherings, maybe we would be in that next, that final phase of governor's plan. That was just my, my thought in my head.
Yeah, I think the concern there is just that whenever flu season starts, it's supposed to come back, so we should end up.
Right, right.
Sean, do you want me to unmute Tracy?
Well, no, I'm, I'm giving her feedback. I'm not looking to get into a discussion. She, she asked for the feedback and I wanted to make sure we touched on it when, when, you know, Courtney covered it and, but I mean, you know, the, the fact that the sheriff didn't want to sign off on it is a very powerful statement. Especially given that they're the ones that would be, you know, they bring in extra people to, you know, help us with that event, as Tracy well knows, but, you know, I, I just, I'm just not comfortable with it. So, you know, I, I would encourage the, well, I mean, they, they can ask for it to keep coming forward, I suppose, but, you know, I don't like, I, I'm, I'm offering the, the feedback ahead of time and would, would hope they would make a decision not to want to go forward and understand the, that we're trying to make a decision that's at the best and the best interest of the most people within the community. This isn't a decision against Dexter Days. I mean, I would look forward to it next year or whatever, when it, when the time is right, but I just don't think this year is the right time to be going forward with it.
Sean, may I make a comment?
Sure you can.
Thank you. I have mixed feelings on this because I know how hard this, these girls work and their, their whole team. And I've said it on our committee meetings a number of times and they're very, very organized and they work very hard on this. So I have really mixed feelings about it, but I guess I understand what you and Scott and are saying as well. It's probably maybe not the best time to go forward with this, considering the crisis we're in, so.
Thanks, Julie. Well said. Any other council members want to comment on that before Courtney goes off to other topics?
I'm Paul here.
Paul?
Well, I think I explained my feelings last time. You know, I kind of made the silly comment that I've never been within six feet of anybody in the beer tent, social tent, excuse me. But the fact is, is that that's just going to be a very difficult situation on the streets in there. The Rotary Club has decided not to build a playhouse this year because we couldn't sell tickets face to face with people. Couldn't sell them at, we sell half of our tickets at the, at, before the, the event and half of them during the event and that would not be almost, that would be almost impossible to do. I understand that the same thing has happened with the court call. And so it just doesn't seem to be logical, you know. I'm disappointed that, you know, Ann Arbor Fair, I'm disappointed there's not a Summerfest. I'm disappointed in none of sights and sounds. I'm disappointed in all those things and I'll be very disappointed that we wouldn't have this one here. For the safety of this community and others from the outside, I just don't see, it's, it's, it's not a good precedent for us to sit trying to do it when all these other places are canceled already.
Thanks, Paul. Donna Fisher has her hand up. Donna?
Yeah, um, we just had a committee meeting from Arts, Culture and Heritage and we spent the entire time feeling bad about getting rid of it. And then adapting to, well, what can we do? And so we're going to do some stuff online to sort of keep our presence known, but we are not going to do anything to call people together on the streets, in the park, for any of that.
You're talking about plein air now.
Yes, yes.
That's the week, that's the week after Dexter Days, correct, Donna?
We are not, we're doing online, things online, perhaps painting sale, but we're not doing anything connected to plein air that brings people together, if that helps.
Thank you, Donna.
So, can, can, kind of on, on that point, you know, like Donna said, ACH met last week and what they've talked about and what they've recommended to city council is not moving forward with the exhibit and tent. Still inviting artists to come and paint in the community, but canceling the children's workshop, the adult workshop, the weekend exhibit. And then taking all of the paintings that are produced that week and trying to do an online sale.
Thanks, Justin. Other comments or questions on that topic? Okay, I hope that feedback is helpful to you, Tracy, and the Dexter Days committee. Courtney Flores, still yours, please?
Yep, so I provided some COVID-related updates if anybody has any questions on that. I reached out to Jim Carson just as wave and senior center and got some updates. We're pushing the different methods you can use to sign up for absentee ballots for August and also eventually for November. We do have our second budget work session this Wednesday at six. When we had our last budget meeting, we talked about the two signal projects at Meadowview and Dexter and Arbor and at Baker and Main. And if council is comfortable with those, I'd like to make those an agenda item for May 6th to get them approved so that Dan can order the materials and then that's our signal engineer. And then have everything ready to go in July. So unless there's an objection to that, I would have that as an item for the 26th. I had a note for Justin to talk about plein air, but he did that already. Justin, do you want to cover, I guess, I guess it's only if anyone has any questions on the charter amendment petition on the attorney general has recommended or indicated that that should be on a November ballot, not an August ballot. So that will be the case. I think that's about it, unless anybody has any questions. Or anything about the parks master plan survey, which you could also just send to Justin separately, but he included their draft survey.
Courtney, how are you and your staff in the office doing?
Um, we're fine. The half the staff is here and then half work from home. We'll probably continue that for a while longer. We do have the, more of the ability to work from home than the guys do, obviously. And we're in a closer knit setting here.
Yeah, understood, understood. Okay, good.
You know, the service is continuing.
Gotcha. I see Scott Bell has his hand up. Sorry, thank you, Justin, Scott.
Yeah, Courtney, your report says, the first paragraph under the COVID update says, you're hoping to have all staff present starting the week of the 18th. I assume that was written before the governor extended the stay home order.
Well, I'm going to have to have the DPW and the, I'm likely going to have to have the DPW and the water wastewater coming in. They're essential employees. They could have been coming in the whole time.
That's fine.
I'll probably keep the office staff at the half and half that we're doing now, because again, just like them, because she, the governor's opening more of the economy, it's creating more work and not all of it can be done remotely.
Understood. And have you, I see the mention of wearing masks and distancing, but have you, have you thought about other measures? Protective measures that would be taken in the office setting?
Yeah, we have hand sanitizer and wipes and, you know, different things like that or, you know, if somebody wants to use that after, you know, they touch the microwave or, you know, anything shared. So we do have other, and we have been wearing the masks basically the whole time we're in here, so.
And, and are people self-affirming that they're symptom free?
Yes. Yes, we're doing that. We don't have a thermometer, yes, but it's posted on the doors, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Good question, Scott. Thank you. Other questions for Courtney? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to my report. I don't have too many updates. I just wanted council to be aware that I've started going over the list of student applications that we've received and try to, plan to try and make some progress on that so I can have the recommendations back to if not at the meeting after Memorial Day, but certainly the first meeting in June. So that's, that's out there. Justin's done a nice job of summarizing those for me and we do have a good amount of interest, which is good, even some repeat folks. So that's all very good. Does anybody have any questions for me on my report?
I only have one comment, Sean. That's, that's in your COVID, you know, the 19th, the 19th prepare, prepare, prepare for change. I like that. My son has been walking a lot on the paths and he feels that there are a lot of people that are not wearing masks. Is there any way that we can emphasize that by putting a sign up app?
I don't think masks are required when you're outside, though. Which is why it's not included on the flyer.
Yeah, Paul, I can tell you as a, as a walker, I carry a mask with me. And generally if I, I just keep it in my pocket and generally if I see a group in front of me, I pull it out and either at a minimum, take it with my hand in my face or I put it on real quick. It doesn't take me any time to loop it over my ears. A lot of other, I see a lot of other people doing that protocol as well. But most of the time, especially if I'm walking like the, you know, towards Hudson Mills or, you know, towards Dexter here and there's not that many people. And when, when, when it's only one or two that may pass you on occasion, there's generally plenty of room, I've found, on the path to pass by. But that's the protocol that I use with, just carry it with me and.
Thank you.
Okay, I will keep this going. I do want to remind everybody that our next council meeting is on the 26th, which is the day after Memorial Day. It's the Tuesday. And I'm planning to keep this at six, six o'clock again. This seems to be working well. We get done a little bit earlier. Courtney, I did want to mention or ask about the, in the consent agenda, the public hearings we've got for seven o'clock in June.
Yeah, we were going to just update those because they also don't have the Zoom meetings listed, but since we'll likely, and I guess I didn't bring that up under my report, but assuming we continue, the governor extended the virtual meetings till the end of June, so assuming we continue to use these until that order expires, they would be posted for six and we would put the Zoom link right in the ad, so.
Perfect.
They went in the packet before that was extended, so.
Yep, okay. I just wanted to make sure we said that online while we're, while we're here. Appreciate you covering that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you reminded me of that before, so thank, thank you for covering that again. Okay, I see a question from Mr. Smith.
Sean, under your upcoming activities, I didn't see the fire board being listed on the 21st.
I may not be able to attend that, but you're right, I forgot to put it in my meeting. I, I don't have the DDA on there either and I should, which is also the 21st.
Okay.
I may not be able to attend the fire board one, though, Jim, just so you're aware.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Sorry about the leaving off the DDA meeting. Okay, council member Cousins, anything to comment on your member report?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, then we're down to.
Your hand raised.
Thank you, I got it. Thank you very much, Justin. Ms. Fisher, you have your hand up for consent agenda?
I do. I'd like to move, we approve the three items listed on the consent agenda. Bills and payroll in the amount of $119,925.54. The setting of a public hearing for a budget June 5th, it says, and perhaps we'll adjust that. And the, a public hearing for water and sewer ordinance review.
Okay, motion by Ms. Fisher. Jim Smith, you have your hand up?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you. Second by Jim Smith. Ms. Jones, there's no discussion on the consent agenda, so Ms. Jones, if you'd call the vote to approve the consent agenda, please?
Okay, Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Thou?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Consent agenda has been approved. Excuse me, we have no old business under item K, so we're down in new business item L1, which is the discussion of the reconstruction of Third Street and Broad, or Third and Broad. So I'll turn this back over to Courtney to introduce. I see Patrick's online, but I'll let Courtney take it away.
Yeah, so we just thought, because we had a little bit of a lighter agenda, we would try to get some feedback on some basic concepts for the Third Street project. It's Third Street with an extension onto Broad that's basically dependent on how much work we do and how far we can make the budget stretch. So there, always I'm prepared a memo of kind of some of the basic things that we need to have some general feedback on so that we can move forward with the design and that'll also allow us to take the design far enough to have citizen input. And definitely the business input that we need. Patrick, I don't know if you or Marcus is going to take us through.
Marcus will, will handle most of it, but just to do a quick kickoff. As Courtney mentioned, we're looking really at the stretch of, of Third, starting at Dexter Mill and heading around the corner. And so what we wanted to do today is hit a couple of the high level items that we're considering as we put our design together. And then there's a few items that we need some, just some direct feedback on and those are kind of queued up in the memo with just a little icon that basically calls those items out to question. So with that, I'll turn it to Marcus and we can work right through it.
Good evening. Thank you, council, Courtney. So you have in your packet the memo dated May 6th and I'm probably just going to kind of run through that, hit the highlights of that. As Patrick mentioned, the project is Third Street, starting at Central and continuing up to Broad and around the curve, westwardly toward the fourth. And how far we can get is going to depend on some of these items we're going to touch on tonight. The schedule for the project is in the memo. We're pretty much on schedule. I don't think we'll have any issue getting the grade inspection package, which is roughly 78 complete plans in, down in July. The one piece that's a little bit fluid is the public meeting slash business with the funeral home, just based on the social distancing requirements. So that may push a little depending on what we're able to do. The repaving project is, the Third Street segment is envisioned as two 11-foot lanes with concrete curb and gutter, which pretty nearly mimics the footprint of the road. With the exception being the existing road is, is shoulders, so. But generally the width and footprint of the road would remain the same. The one point of note on that segment is the sidewalk and is up on top of the hill between the alley and, and Central. It looks like we're going to have to shift that sidewalk closer to the road just to be able to maintain a compliance for the crossing. But as we get the design worked out, we'll be sharing. As you continue around the, around the corner onto Broad Street, I've laid out. I've laid out, uh, now is, uh, again, 11-foot travel lanes, um, and then bike lanes either side, on both sides of the road, along with parallel parking on both sides of the road. It's worthy of noting there that with the, the wider thing that's in front of the funeral home proposed cross-section, even including the bike lanes, actually reduce the road width by 10 to 11 feet for that stretch, so I wanted to point that out. The one, uh, feedback item on, on the memo there is, if we need to have, I guess we just want to confirm that, that bike lanes on, on Broad is the desired treatment there? And here.
Uh, question. I, I support the bike lanes on Broad. What is the right-of-way on Third? Is there any possibility of having bike lanes there connecting Central to Broad, or no?
We already have to obtain right-of-way on that stretch, because the sidewalk that's existing is pretty much completely out of the right-of-way. If you look on the, I think it's shown on the map, you can see, oh, I guess it's not, well, it is, um, it's not super obvious. Yeah, you can kind of see that the sidewalk is already on private property, so we do have right-of-way we have to get in that area, and if we have to move the sidewalk down, um, I'm not sure about the width there.
Yeah, I could touch on that a little more detail. So yes, the, the, the project is gonna require, uh, a take from the parcel the inside of the curve. The existing road and sidewalk is already on private property. Um, we need to enhance, improve the geometry of that curve to meet, uh, design guidelines. So the road will, potentially will encroach even a little bit more. Um, so there will be a right-of-way take needed for that. The challenge with bike lanes, uh, after you get around the curve is, as I mentioned, the embankment that you run into on the west side of Third Street, it goes up pretty fast. So if you have a wider road, then you have less room to put that sidewalk in a location that can be compliant with the crossing. And then all, and then the east side of the road, uh, if the road were to widen by five or six feet to accommodate a bike lane, although it would be in the right-of-way proper, that's still approach, just functionally encroached the mill. So that's something that we could, well, we haven't looked that closely at, the, the discussions that we had with staff during the scoping of this was essentially that Central Street, um, is sort of the preferred bike route, but we recognize that people ride, um, and if they were to do that, presumably they'd be able to continue down Broad to Huron and back. There wouldn't be a need necessarily to have the, something we could look at more closely and, and give you more, I guess, about, uh, answer of what the impacts would be if we're to.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, the memos, on the, the crosswalk, sidewalk, um, challenges at the alley, but they're solvable. Um, and then also we need to confirm, um, the type of crosswalk treatment that's preferred, whether it's just pavement markings, or if we wanted to continue the, the downtown, the DDA detail with the stamped crosswalks with the concrete ribbons. Then the last two items in the memo, the stormwater management, this is item on this project. There's a couple of different alternatives, uh, that have been, are being evaluated. We still need to get the right-of-entry, right-of-entry permit from the railroad to complete the topographic survey along the railroad ditch, which will answer some of these questions. I'm happy to get in to more detail if, if counsel would like, but I think it's laid out pretty well in the memo, and the bottom line is, this is, the solution is gonna be some type of hybrid. Most likely, some type of hybrid option that incorporates some infiltration, some BMPs, and potentially rearranging the, the drainage a, a little bit, maybe trying to send less of it to the, the railroad, because the DPW long-term concerns of maintenance ability there. We don't think we can get it all down to Fifth, uh, based on grades, but, um, basically trying to keep as much of the drainage, uh, within the city system and making it easier for long-term maintenance for DPW. We looked at going north out to the river, and there's some pretty big concerns with that route, just given the, uh, the existing size of the pipes and the accessibility of those. So, as that's developed in more detail, we'll. And then the final item that we're looking to, I get counsel's opinion on was the decorative lighting. Whether that should continue down Third Street, whether it should be on Broad or both or neither. One thing I'll point out, just for your information, it, it appears, looking at the, existing infrastructure with the lighting, that the, uh, power would come from, from Broad and Main Street. Because this project goes all the way there, it, if, if lighting is preferred either on Broad or Third or both, it may make sense to design it now, but not and when the next, when that section brought in tween is completed, then, especially when the power is brought edge of the, to the, to this project, then those, those, like, could be installed at that point. Um, because you'd be looking at putting in a couple of locks, a conduit, uh, just to power them, in the meantime, so whether it's now or later, we, we still do need, uh, feedback on whether decorative lighting should be incorporated. Pretty much where we're at, and I'd be happy to, Patrick and Courtney can answer any questions.
Thanks, Marcus. Marcus, my, my thought on the lighting is, we probably should have some type of lighting near the crosswalk. I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's needed on Third necessarily, but I, I think near the crosswalk would be a smart idea.
So Sean, with that comment, does you also think it should go all the way down Broad Street to, to Main?
The, the lighting?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I ki- I kind of do envision Broad with lighting, but maybe I'm not the only one. I mean, I, it doesn't have to there, but I, I, I kind of see it that way. It's already started part of the way down.
Yeah, okay, I, just a question. I agree with you. And I, and I'm, I haven't made up my mind about Third Street yet.
Yeah, I would think maybe Broad and, but not necessarily Third. But.
Well, I like your idea about the lights at the crosswalk.
Well, and, and the other, the other, um, the other idea I'll just throw out there, you know, the, it looks like from the, the last map in the packet that the sidewalk from Central to the alley and at least a little bit past the alley is within the right-of-way. Is, is there a possibility that we could create a, maybe a moderate retaining wall there, uh, maybe out of stones or something that looks nice? I mean, drop it a couple of feet and, and be able to use that space, then the sidewalk could be up against the retaining wall. You know, Broad has, Broad has that unique ability of a retaining wall along quite a bit of it on the, what do we call it, at the north side. It, it might be a, might be a nice feature to have along there, and it would give us room to look at potentially having the sidewalk a little further away from the street and, and maybe even adding like bike lanes. I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, that, that could be done. We could look at that, I mean, cost, of course, could be a factor on this, you getting retaining walls. That's not something that was envisioned with preliminary scoping, but we can take a closer look at that to see what that would entail.
I don't think it would have to be very tall, is I guess what I'm thinking, but maybe I'm wrong. I do know, I do know there's quite a steep slope on that one section that you pointed out.
I used to live just two, two doors away from that, and so I used that sidewalk. You know, shoving a baby carriage or walking a kid one time or another, so. It's, uh, it's very, very steep there. That sidewalk is rarely used, because it does, but it's certainly not ADA-approved at all. And, uh, I like your idea of a potential wall there. Hopefully it would give us a few extra feet for, for bike lanes, and, uh, maybe a nice way that the sidewalk will fit into that whole carriage, so. I think we ought to have them come back with some ideas and thoughts that they could do that. And I know it's gonna be a cost above and beyond, but we probably don't want it. Let's do it right, do it right the first time.
Thanks, Paul. Zach, I see your hand up. You have the floor, sir.
I'll try to get my pennies out there quickly. I would like bike lanes on both Broad and, uh, Third there. And in fact, I'd like for us to consider doing the green paint on there. It makes it pop a little better, and psychologically, it reduces the, the area that you're able to drive in your car, even though it doesn't really, but that helps slow traffic in the areas I've observed to do that, that have that. For sidewalk, I would be concerned about moving it closer to Third. On the other side of town, we're actually making efforts realigning the street alignment to get the street farther away from the sidewalk, so that once that's been cleaned, the snowplows don't put stuff back up onto it. Um, additionally, I concern that location, it would prevent any parallel parking along Third on that side in the future. I know there's the ADA concern, but because this is an existing sidewalk, there's a little bit more flexibility with the ADA that we have to try and get it as close reasonable as possible, and I think, uh, retaining wall there would be good. Um, I, I really like the idea of continuing the decorative stamps for the crossing there. For our major streets, it's, it does a good job of reminding folks that there's something going on here. We need to pay attention for pedestrians, even when there aren't pedestrians. I think streetlights in both of them would be good. I would opine that, um, I don't really fancy the current streetlights that we have. I know everyone likes the faux early 20th century cast iron, but they don't do a particularly good job of focusing light just down to the ground. They tend to throw it up against the entire sky. For the curve, I've said this before, I'll say it again, I'd like for that to be as tight as possible, again, because if we're wanting to make the town better for pedestrians, we want to make sure that vehicles are encouraged not to drive as fast as possible. Uh, I know that, that is a truck route, but if we need to, if there's some way to, uh, do multiple curve or something, so that when the really long truck goes through there, it's not gonna flip, um, that would be nice. I do like, it appears that the geometry is being changed, um, with the extension there, right, right in front of the depot. I know there've been a number of times I've been in a car that other folks have been driving, and even myself, where it's, it's real easy to miss the stop sign when you're coming on Third, um, towards that. And, um, I think that's it. Thank you.
I just, can I ask something on, follow up on that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, Zach.
Um, so that Third Street was gonna be curbing gutted, so there wouldn't be parking. Just so everyone's aware of that, right? Marcus slash Patrick?
Correct.
I mean, you would still be able to have an access into the mill site, you know, to access their parking, but I don't think there's on-street parking there now in the curb and gutter would prohibit that.
Yeah, and I get, my, my perspective as a planner is that I look decades ahead in the future, and if, if the sidewalk does move there, then it becomes much more expensive in the future to do that, because we have to then redo the entire sidewalk all over again.
Right.
I see Scott Bell has his hand up, so I'll go to Scott next.
Thanks, Sean. Uh, two comments and a question. So I, I wanted to support the, um, bike lanes on Broad and, uh, the stamped crosswalk, I think is a good idea, for the reasons Zach stated, i- if no other. I mean, it's, it's a good visual cue, a reminder to vehicles. My question has to do with the realignment and stop signage. What's gonna happen with that? So right now, we have a, a stop sign as you approach the bend from the southeast before it bends into, before Third bends into, into Broad. But now it is more of a perpendicular intersection with Broad and Third, or Broad in itself, depending on how you look at it. How, how's that envisioned to work, that traffic flow, traffic control?
Well, the, the traffic would be the, so the northbound Third, um, approaching Broad would continue to be control under stop control. Broad Street, um, at, at the approach of the intersection, would either, um, stay, you know, stay to the right and take the curve around onto Third, or stay to the left and, and, and Broad as it is now, so.
Oh, I see. So that, I see what you're doing, okay.
Yeah, the movements wouldn't be impacted, but I, I will mention a couple of things. The geometry as it exists now, um, is less than ideal. So the intersection geometry will be revised to make an effort to get that teed up a little bit better. We're evaluating whether or not an island would help us do that, if that could even be done with the turning, movements that need to happen there. Um, and then also, as it relates to the curve itself, we are going to be pursuing a design exception, um, to keep that curve as tight of a radius as possible, while still meeting the, the needs of the, the turning movement.
Thank you.
A couple of reasons to do that beyond just the, the traffic calming effects of that. It just, if, if we, if we designed it for a 30 mile an hour curve, which is what you're supposed to do for a 20-speed limit, it would basically take that entire, you'd need to take that entire parcel. So that's our, that we can cite, which allows us to get a tighter curve, which has an impact.
Gotcha.
So what we're hoping, um, as we get some feedback tonight, whether it's the next meeting or the following meeting, basically at the same time that we were gonna be ready to start having these conversations with the business owners and the residents, we'll have some of those layouts, uh, for council, which will have more of that detail of the specifics of how that intersection geometry would look.
Scott, anything further?
No.
I see Michelle has her hand up. Michelle?
I, I wanted to, uh, ask questions and make some suggestions, if you wouldn't mind, regarding, um, Third Street. Currently, they do park, excuse me, they do park perpendicularly to the building. So if you look at the, where it says start of construction, and you've got that arrow.
Yeah, you mean for the mill.
For the mill.
Yeah, we know that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm, I, I, I'm not sure how, how, um, easily engineered parking on-street would be on Third Street on the Mill Street side of it. Um, but because that is a commercial venue, because you also have, um, the cider mill, sorry, little brain fart, down farther on Central Street, um, I think we have to be cognizant that we need to put as much on-street parking as we possibly can on Third Street.
Well, good points, good points all around. You know, I, I know that when we did the Central Street design some years ago, we had quite a few, bit of conversation with the mill. I assume that staff will be reaching out to them to, uh, let them know that that project is coming up and engage them early.
Right, we just wanted to have something to show them that was.
Yep, makes sense, Courtney.
Stop something.
If I could maybe touch on something, um, that we, a couple of council people talked about, that being the retaining wall. In the past, when we've done retaining walls, there are a ton of them in town, but, um, one comes to mind over on Central Street, uh, just other side of the cider mill, uh, right before we get to the Mastro Bridge, we did a, just a kind of more of a traditional concrete block, uh, decorative retaining wall in that instance. Certainly, there's a lot more products on the market these days, um, some that have the ability to kind of mimic more of a natural stone-type look. Um, I don't think any of them are gonna match. Um, I don't think any of them are going to match exactly what you have right now with kind of the, the fieldstone block wall that exists on that, uh, kind of the north side of Broad. But if that's a look that you're going for, we can research that a little bit more. So I, I guess I just want to throw that out if, if that, uh, that style of wall is something that we'd like to maybe explore a little bit on Third, or if we can, uh, maybe just go to more of like a typical, uh, segmental landscape block wall, like you might see. Just, just some, uh, ideas for some thought there.
Paul has his hand. I think you lost, Sean.
It looks like Sean did just.
Yeah, he must have, he must have disconnected. Maybe his connection went bad.
Are you running the meeting now?
Right, yeah, you're off. Well, you can call on yourself now, Paul.
It was, uh, it was questions on, that we've been talking about on the curb there, uh, next to the mill. So am I assuming, I think they have four parking spots there, one handicap, um, and then three others there on that side. Would there be a curb there that will not allow that on that side?
We, I think we, we intend to have, still have access to their site. So it might not be where the whole thing is accessed, but there'll be access points where that they, so that they can get to the sites from their trucks and their unloading and things.
Yeah, well, there's two access points now. Those will probably be narrow, I would assume. They're not going to be big wide like they are now with nothing there. But I'm talking particularly about the, the, the building itself. There are, there was a, there was a handicap space there and three others, maybe four, but I think there's three others there on that side. Is there a curb there that doesn't allow that anymore, perpendicular parking along that building? Or is that going to be eliminated with them? Because that was a major concern when we talked about Central Street there. Contiguous to their building.
Right, we haven't had any discussion.
I just, I wanted to know what the plans are.
Yeah, and we're not to that level of detail yet. That's why we haven't met with them yet, because we just needed to figure out. I mean, now we're talking about adding bike lanes and different things. Now we need to look at it and see where we can provide those access points and if we can get people to those spots. So.
One thing I would point out too is, um, if, uh, if you provide on-street parking, um, and if it, maybe in certain scenarios it's, it's used for other, but if it's primarily, primarily for the, um, mill, you know, if, that takes up space. So when, whatever we can, whatever we do, even though that a good portion of their, their part, what they're utilizing for parking lot is, is within right of what. Once we define it with the curb and have those defined access points, you know, the wider the road gets, practically the sort of the smaller their site gets. So if, if the parking is really only going to be used for them anyways, if we can road as narrow as possible, that gives them more flexibility in what they're able to do on-site behind the curb. It's a trade-off.
Right.
And, and Paul, I think just to pick up on, um, your discussion about interacting with the mill and making sure they have the number of spaces they need. You know, in, in 13, time, 2013, we had quite a bit of discussion with them. That really, a lot of the debate centered around whether, um, we could have perpendicular parking right off the road, what we have right now on Central Street. And what's different about this time is that, uh, now the parking would be on the, on the, basically you come around a curb. So there's some loss of sight distance, whereas on Central Street, it's pretty wide open. So if somebody's backing out of those spaces on Central and you're coming into town, you're going to be able to see them, you know, pretty much all the way from before railroad tracks even. But, uh, in this instance, when we're coming around a curb, those parking spaces are right there. So that's just a part of the study we'll have to look at. And the good news is we've had a lot of these discussions with the mill, uh, ownership. And, and there's, there was a transfer of ownership, uh, actually in 2014 roughly, uh, when we built the project. So, uh, the good news is I think there's some continuity of discussion that we can pick right back up with. But as Courtney mentioned, we just haven't really had the opportunity to have those conversations. But with these, uh, decisions being made today, it'll allow us to be informed when we go have those discussions. And I'm sure we'll be follow-up with, uh, with council on the outcomes of those.
If I can make one clarification, Patrick, the mill ownership, um, is what I think transferred to, from one entity to the other, um, but the property itself, um, I think is still owned by the original person.
Yep, thank you.
Justin, I'm going to need your help. Um, I lost my internet connection on my computer, so I'm on my phone. Can you, uh, tell me if anybody else has questions on this topic?
Sure. As, as of right now, I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay.
Pay your bill, Tom?
What's that?
You pay your bill.
Well, my wife is still watching TV upstairs, so I assume so.
Well, I'm glad I don't have to run the rest of the meeting, so I'm glad you're back.
Yep, thanks, thanks. Are there, are there any more comments ma- made by OHM at this point? Or staff? I know Kurt joined us this evening. Kurt, did you have anything to add as our street foreman?
His, uh, his video is currently off.
Oh, maybe he's left, okay. Okay, well then we will move on to new business item L2, which is a consideration of a resolution of some type regarding ballot proposal for the August 4th, 2020 election. Are there any hands up, Justin?
Uh, Jim Smith.
Okay, I recognize Jim Smith.
Yes, I'd like to move, we approve the second resolution beginning on page 65.
That is the one to rescind?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Smith?
Uh, Donna Fisher has her hand up.
Okay, Ms. Fisher? Seconded by Fisher, did I hear?
Yes.
Okay, seconded by Donna Fisher, thank you. Council discussion? Jim, you made the motion. Would you like to say anything?
Yes, uh, just looking at, uh, everything people are going through right now. Both just being, you know, most people, um, staying home, um, some being able to work from home, some not. And just the way the economy is going to be, it may be sluggish for a little while. I just think asking for this millage vote at this time, uh, is a little bit too much to ask of our citizens. I think they, uh, hopefully we will be able to move into a time of, you know, beginning to recover. And I, I think it just makes sense to, uh, put this off for just a little bit longer. It doesn't mean I'm, I still support going forward with a new fire station. I just think we're going to have to just wait a little bit longer.
Okay, I see that Zach has his hand up. Is that correct?
Yep, I, I just wanted to clarify from staff that if this were approved, the earliest we could collect any millage money isn't until next summer. Is that correct?
It already was, um, a 2021, even if we pass it, because it has to go on the summer bill.
All right, and if things really go in the crapper, we're not obliged to issue bonds or collect the millage. Is that correct?
Right, if you don't sell the bond, you can't collect the millage.
Yeah, but so putting this on and having voted doesn't commit us to have to take money, right?
Right.
Okay, well, um, I, I will add my, I'm not in favor of this. This is something that the community's been working on for two decades. We went through the Great Recession, we went through this. It is a tough ask, but we haven't, we, we didn't stop the project for the, um, the trail. That's a million, two. Uh, we haven't started to stop any of the street projects. So I think we're able to talk, walk and chew bubble gum at the same time. And I don't know what the end game is, because if we're, we had been part of the ninth wealthiest school district in the entire state, ninth highest household income. We had 3.9% unemployment in the U.S. and it was still too much of an ask. Does that mean we're not really going to consider this until we're top five household incomes in the state and under 3% unemployment? Um, it's just, we have to rip the Band-Aid off sometimes, which, which we keep kicking the can down the road. Eventually, it's going to turn into a rock and it's going to break our foot when we have to kick it. That's all.
Thanks, Zach. Justin, you seen any other hands up here?
Paul has his hand up.
Paul, you're next, please.
Yes, thank you. Uh, well, I, I agree with Zach, uh, partially, I guess. Uh, I, I would, I don't know why we, I mean, first of all, I could support not having it on the August ballot. We don't know, that's a short period of time. I would certainly support that. But we have a November ballot, which everybody theoretically is going to vote on. A presidential election, congressman, uh, senators, state senators, all that's going to happen. As well as I'm sure some other proposals that are coming down the road. So to, to say go to year 2021 skips a whole election. And we have an opportunity to place it on the ballot in November, but we don't have to have it make that decision tonight. We can wait and see how things go. And then when it's the final deadline, whatever that date is, that we have to put on the November ballot, Courtney has that, I assume it's like maybe a couple of weeks or so after the August election. I don't know.
Yeah, it's the August 11th.
August 11th, thank you. So we can have that decision then. That's two months away. And so I think that to have that decision and make it now is very, very premature. I would also say that, and I don't, and I don't know if I've heard it correctly or not, but that, that there will be a, a vast desire, they have a lot of buildings done. And I don't know what that has to do with the cost of a fire hall, but if that's true, the bids are going to be outrageous, we'll be another 300 to half a million dollars or a million dollars behind again. That's a big rock, as Zach has made the analogy. And so I'm not in favor of this at all. I hope that, that we would not make this decision now to delay it until 2021 and make the decision again, make the opportunity to make this decision again.
Thank you, Paul. Zach, do you have your hand back up again?
Yeah, I was just going to make a motion to amend the resolution to place it on the November ballot with the corrected language in the, uh, earlier resolution, or the resolution that appeared above, uh, page 65.
Okay, so motion by Zach to amend, is there a second for that?
I, I think, go ahead.
Julie, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, so seconded by Julie to amend the motion. So it would, essentially we're, we're rescinding the August language in the amendment and pushing it to November. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
Okay, discussion on the amendment?
I have to ask Zach a question about a friendly amendment.
Yeah.
Zach, would you be willing to withdraw this motion and make a motion that relates to making the decision in August for November? So that we do make that decision then instead of now?
I, I'm open to it, but I'm not sure what extra value that gets us, um, because we can always rescind it as we've been working at here.
Okay, so that, we're still where we are. We've got a motion to amend, which is going to essentially rescind the August election and put it on the November election. I'm just trying to make sure I keep track where we are. Is there other council that wants to discuss the amendment? Because what, this is going to require that we vote on an amendment to the original motion and then the original motion. The way we're, the way we're proceeding, so. I don't see any hands on my phone. You, Justin?
I see no, no hands.
Okay. Well then, seeing no further discussion, I'd like to ask Ms. Jones to call the vote to approve the amended, the amendment to the original motion. Again, this is going to require two votes, but the, if we, if the amendment, a vote of yes would modify the original motion. Okay, a vote of no would not. Everybody understand? Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote to amend the original motion.
Okay, Cousins?
Yes.
Bell?
No.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Fisher?
No.
And Kio?
No. Okay, so the original motion is still on the table by Smith, seconded by Fisher to postpone the decision until 2021. Again, the original motion on, I believe, was 65 of the packet. Discussion on that motion, or additional discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I, I would quickly ask Mr. Smith what metrics he's going to look at that we ought to reconsider or consider placing it on there in 2021.
I just felt that, uh, we shouldn't do it in August and I didn't feel that November is enough time to have any type of recovery for people. And so my preference would be to move it to the spring of, uh, 2021.
Are, are we going to look at unemployment in Washington County, in Dexter Township, um, in the country, household income? What sort of metric? Because I, I'm not sure what, what it looks like, if it's, if it's like from just continued can kicking.
I think we just look at the conditions at that time.
Paul has his hand up.
Okay, Paul, he must be waving it in the video.
I have a question to Jim Smith as well. So Jim, where we have one of the, the largest turnout by our population, our voters in November, you're now asking to transfer that into a period of time where we have no ballot issues at all, no national elections, no anything at all, we will have a much smaller turnout, and we know that for sure. Why would you not want the most people in the city to vote on the most important, you have in front of us in two decades?
I've seen in a lot of municipalities that when ballot proposals are put in with a presidential election, that they a lot of times are missed because they end up on the backside of the ballot. And so, you know, you don't necessarily get any better, uh, voting on the ballot proposal. voting on the ballot proposals at that time.
With all the information that the people have had about this and that you'll see that there'll be more, you're, you're telling me there'll be more people voting in a non-election issue area in the spring of 2021, that there will be even the few that miss it on the back of a ballot? Is that your conjecture?
Well, wait, let me jump in before, let me just, Paul, he didn't, he, his motion isn't to put it on the spring election. He wants, he's saying that he wants to evaluate it in the spring.
That means it'll even be later than that, then. It'll have to be in the summer.
Right, it could, it could, it could be that, he, he's saying he postpones the discussion until 2021, if I'm understanding right.
Well, that's what it says, but his statement was spring.
Yeah, I know, I just want to make, I just try to make sure people are clear that we're not just moving it to the spring election. This, this rescind motion pushes the discussion or the decision until sometime in 2021.
Can we just postpone it till we're all dead and let the next spokes river with it?
I'll, I'll, I'll say my final thing. I can't vote for this. It has no structure at all of why we're postponing it, other than the feelings that we have a bad economy and people aren't feeling good. And we want to see how people feel at that time. There's myriad of ways that we can text that up. School district just recently decided not to have a bond issue because they sent out surveys to see how the people felt. And so that's possible that we can do the same thing. If we feel that, then we have a concrete way of determining how people feel in the city. It's a concrete way that we can survey the people without a vote. I don't know why we wouldn't do that, to find out what their feelings really are. Then we could delay depending on what that is. But to delay it just to 2021 because we have a, a feeling that people won't vote for, or that things will be better than that, doesn't make any sense to me. It's not a responsible guess of how people are going to feel.
Okay, I see Ms. Fisher has her hand up. Donna?
Yeah, I don't know how we got to how people feel. I, as someone who's elected to represent people here, I think a lot of families are under a lot of stress. And I think this is one stressor we can remove and we can move on, we can pick up right where we left off. But I don't see any problem with, with taking some kind of worry off of somebody's plate, should there be one.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Okay, seeing, seeing no further hands, Ms. Jones, would you please call the vote on the original motion by Smith, seconded by Fisher to rescind?
Okay, Bell?
Yes.
Cousins?
No.
Fisher?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Michelle?
No.
Knight?
No.
Kio?
Yes. All right, so I would, I would ask, I would ask Courtney, Courtney, if you could put a little note in the file, maybe not the first meeting of January, but maybe the second meeting of January, let's make sure we bring this back around for at least a reminder of that it's out there, please.
Okay.
That brings us down to council comments. Let's see, I'd like to start with, just go on my phone here, start with Mr. Cousins.
Oh, I, I still can't understand why we made that decision. There's going to be a vote on, on members of this council in November. And it would be really fun to find out how the people that are running for the election in November feel about this decision. And we just took that away from us. They can talk about it, but they will not be able to have that opportunity to make this decision anymore. I don't understand what we do to ourselves all the time by delaying and having an increase in cost. It's beyond me and beyond, I think, a number of people in this community that see this delay making it just more expensive all the time.
Thank you, Paul. Anything further? Okay.
Stay well and stay healthy.
Okay, yep, you too. Zach, you're next on the list on my phone here.
I'd best not.
Okay. Stay well, stay safe. Donna, you're next, please.
Yeah, I'm channeling Joe Semafaro. Those dumpsters or clothing containers or whatever they are, they've moved from the back to the front down at the mill and out at the shopping center. And I think there's one down at the bottom of the alley here. So one time, they're not ours and so they have to get permission from the people that they're sitting on. So can we explain that we don't really want them out front like that? Did you do something about it in the past?
I don't remember. I'll, I'll talk to Michelle about it and we'll figure something out. We can at least make sure they're not in the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Fisher?
No, no, good things.
Okay. Julie?
Uh, yes, I have a couple things. Because I have the premier view of the park right outside my window here now. I get to see all the activity that takes place there. And I have noticed that, and I'm sure this has something to do with the restaurants being closed and people can't sit in the restaurant. So a lot of people are sitting in the park area, right, the one up, the two seating areas at the top, right next to the road here. And I've noticed some people leaving their trash on the park benches rather than putting them in the trash can. I know there is one trash can on the one circular area, but there's not one in the second one. We may want to consider putting a trash can on that second circular area that has the free benches, so, something to consider.
I actually took A&amp;W trash from there myself. I took A&amp;W trash from there myself last week.
Because you're right, they do just leave it on the bench.
Unfathomable, really, but, but yeah, like Justin was saying, we did just order a couple new trash cans. Trash has been an issue. Dan was saying that it's almost like we need to put a sign on them that says, if this can's full, there's one like ten feet away, please use that one, because it seems like everyone's putting it in the same can when there's an empty one not far away. But we, we have added some temporary cans and some other things just because we have noticed trash being an issue, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I have one other thing. I, as I'm walking, I do notice that the DTE, when they decommissioned the substation here on Broad, they did, they were kind enough to leave ten bricks right in the corner. Do you know what their intention is with those bricks? Of course, you know, I want to buy a brick or have a brick as a memento, so.
Yeah, I, I know there was an issue because of the potential PCBs, so I don't think they wanted anyone to take them. I didn't notice that they had left some, so I think, I know they still have some potentially site cleanup when they take down the fencing, so.
Right, are the bricks within the fencing, Julie?
They are inside the fencing, yeah.
Yeah, I think that the, it just means their contractor hasn't finished them, but I can follow up if you would like.
I would like that, yes, please do. Yeah, I would just like one of those two as a memento. That's our history, that little building there, and it's no longer there. So, thank you, Michelle.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Julie. I'll go to Jim Smith next.
I have nothing more.
Okay, and then I think Scott Bell, please.
I just wanted to say everybody stay safe and I wish you good health.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott, same to you. Okay, we are back around to non-arranged participation. Do we have anyone that would like to speak under non-arranged this evening? I don't see any hands up. Justin, do you?
I can make a, yeah, I can make a quick comment on Kurt's behalf that he can only listen today, so he was not able to comment. He wa- he was listening, he just can only listen.
Oh, okay, well, good. Well, tell him, thanks for tuning in.
Well, he can hear you, if he's still there.
I did have one thing I forgot to mention.
Okay.
Um, there will be a temporary banner sign put up on the berm in front of Shops of Dexter. That's the retail plaza next to Bush's. Just, it's a temporary sign just to let people know that those businesses are open.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Is there, I don't see any other hands. Do you, Justin?
I do not.
Okay, then I will seek a motion for adjournment, please.
Still move.
Moved by Smith, was it seconded by Knight?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor? Two of us saying aye.
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 And those opposed? We are adjourned at 8:01. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, be safe.
Thank you.
And we have our workshop on Wednesday, so talk to everybody on Wednesday.
Thank you. See you then. Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
You too.